That's this connection. Yeah, we're supposed to.
Good evening, folks. Sorry for the slight delay. We're going to go ahead and get started with the special study session that we have about budget items. Just as a matter of notification for everyone, this meeting will conclude no later than 7:30 this evening. So, Mr. Dingman, would you please get us started with our agenda for tonight?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm actually going to turn it directly to our CFO, Andy Richards, to start going through a fiscal year 2026 preliminary budget review this evening, starting with a review of the budget comparison summary from the general fund.
And as we're going through, we have a plethora of paperwork in front of us. Could you please point out to us where we are as we move through each of these items?
Certainly, sir. The first thing that I want to talk about, I've got it on the screen, but this is freshly up. I don't have this printed out. But just, and we've, and you've looked at this before, but, you know, we continually keep to update this as we meet with individual departments and try to trim projections and also budgets. And so what we have today shows that for our fiscal year '25 projected, just look at the bottom line, we've trimmed our budget, I guess deficit, our revenues, less our expenditures. So, we were, the amended was at 19.4, and we've got it, the projected now, to 17 and a half. So, we've made some fairly significant progress there. This is the general fund. I don't have, we just got this updated, but I wanted to kind of show you where we are. And these totals will be reflected in this other handout I have for you. So, but anyway, I just wanted to point out, so our, if we're looking at our contingency reserve percentage, we're estimating 24% by the end of '25. And then, we're also, you know, we're also working through the '26 budget requests. And I don't know that we've updated as much as we can. I think there might be even some more updates. We just haven't gotten them in here yet. But at this point, we're showing a $10 million deficit in '26, showing a $7.7 million fund balance at 12%. So...
Andy, can I ask you a quick question? When we do things that are not tied to departments, like water slides or other purchases that are going to be added, that's coming from the general fund. Where is it categorized on this image on the screen?
Non-departmental. It's that last expenditure line item.
Okay, thank you.
So, non-departmental will have things that we do, you know, it'll have things like the water slides typically. We bought the building that, you know, that's in that category. Also transfers that we make to other funds, like to the Lofi Contribution Fund and the Convention Center.
Cabanas Land, is that in that too?
What's that?
The Cabanas Land, the $2 million?
Right.
From their non-departmental?
Yeah, because it wasn't for a particular departmental purpose. It was just a purchase.
And if the property sales happen, will those go back to non, will they go back to this fund?
They'll go straight back to the general fund as revenue, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You are, you're referencing the Cabanas property. That actually closed in '24, right? You're not necessarily saying?
No, I'm not saying it. I'm just trying to get my mind into categories.
Okay.
So, when we do something that's not police, not parks?
Right.
Where is it in this sheet? And that's what I was trying to cut.
I mean, non-departmental.
At the risk of derailing our schedule, you know, you handed one of these out, it's up on the screen, one of these out Tuesday night?
Right.
To us. And the excess revenue over expenditure was 8.9 million. How, in 48 hours, did it go to 10.1?
The transfer, the, so we moved the, that's due to the River Valley Communication Center. So, we added, we've got a $1.3 million transfer that we added there, because that's the portion of, that will have, you know, we're estimating that's a portion that will have to help support the 911 center. It was taken out of the budget in '26, but the, you know, we moved the, we moved the personnel and the revenues that come in to support that out of the general fund. And we've got a new fund established for '26.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Yeah.
If I might add to that, and just as a reminder, you know, what is shown on the screen here, and what we've been working to refine, is the entire budget request is submitted by departments, you know, aside from continuing to refine revenues and those sorts of things, and continuing to work through the process to make sure everything's in the correct, you know, correct column and correct line. These numbers have not been necessarily refined. We haven't, administration hasn't reviewed them with the departments yet. And so, we haven't gone through and refined the projected, the projected column for 2025. We haven't gone through and refined the 2026 column yet. So, this, and by and large, is raw number, the raw numbers in terms of what came in from the departments, yes. Just as a reminder. Thank you.
All right, so...
Just real quick on that. How much could we expect this to fluctuate between now and budget time? I mean, this is the first time we're seeing this, right?
Right.
It's the first time we're seeing it. You guys are seeing it and dealing with it regularly. How much at this point, at this level, first time seeing it, if you can think back, I know Carl was heavily involved in the budget pretty significantly, what should we expect of a fluctuation? Are we talking million dollars or so? Or are we talking?
Well, just for, just for example, I mean, we started talking about this on Monday, and we had a little discussion Tuesday. But on Monday, when we were looking at this particular schedule, that excess revenues over expenditures number when we started was in the close to $12 million number. And so, we've been working on that to refine those numbers to bring, and that's come down from that number, and 11.8 or something like that, I remember. But now, we're down to 10-ish. But we continue to work through those. And like I said, those numbers include all of the capital requests so far. All, I mean, I think it includes all, if not mostly all, of all personnel requests. I think, and so, all of those things are still in there, in terms of, they haven't been refined and presented as a proposed budget yet. So, that's where we're, that's where we're at.
I mean, it's really hard to, it's really hard to say what to expect. I mean, I think about prior years, you know, we were dealing with some pretty hefty items, you know, like the $5 million that went to the airport. And, you know, it was like, oh, we need to get that, you know. You know, I've seen some pretty heavy swings in the past of that magnitude. Well, I can't foresee anything right now that's, you know, the one that crept up on me today was, well, we've pulled the River Valley Act, the 911 activity out of the general fund, but we're still going to have to support that.
And, and just...
That was, that one kind of, you know, I don't see anything bigger than that, really.
And let me clarify. Is that a '26?
Yes.
That's okay. So, I guess what I'm getting at is, how much do I, I expect fluctuation on '25? Because '25 is really going to give me some guidance into what I got to do for '26.
Right.
I think that'll, that'll depend heavily on the projected column as we work through the, with the departments in terms of what their actual projected spend is for 2025?
I mean, I mean, we're, we're just, we're about $1.5 million in terms of excess revenues over expenditures in '25. And I know we're talking about '26. That's what we're planning on. But, I mean, I'm, we went from Tuesday, 21.6% in contingency reserve percentage to 24.2%, which helps me going into '26. But I want to, I just want to make sure that I know what that might look like.
I mean, the result, the, what's, what's getting us those results right now, just in particular, is, you know, we've met with a handful of departments?
Okay.
And gone through the projections, which a lot of times are based upon the amended budget, that was the budget cuts.
Yeah.
And as we talk through some of the individual items, we can say, hey, we're not going to...
We're not going to do that.
Is the 10% hold a factor here as well? I mean, is that what's helping this number?
It's not factored into these numbers.
So, it could go up in the positive, like, because of the 10% holdback, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I guess so.
So, I mean, when you're asking the swing?
Right.
I think that's the thing we have, we got to think through, too, is, what's that 10% hold doing in a positive?
And, well, and to that point, if, we talked about a balanced budget, zero, getting to zero. But if we fall under 20%, we've got to have revenues over expenditures. And depending on how low we go, shows me how much I need to make sure that we're, are we, we're cutting spending?
I've got a little exercise to kind of demonstrate that coming up.
Okay, good. I just, at '25, ending of '25 is going to help me a little bit in '26, although we, '26 is its own year, but that, that's going to help me a little bit.
Okay. All right, let's move on to next one. The next schedule I want to show you is just the, the more, the revenues that we've got.
So, are we on to item two?
Item two, statement of revenue comparisons.
Is this printed for us somewhere?
No, this one's not printed.
This one is printed?
No, I don't have this one, because these were, I don't see any significant updates there. But, I mean, our largest revenue sources, and I think we've covered most, you know, kind of covered this during Tuesday night, was, you know, obviously, the biggest revenue source is our county sales tax, and our franchise fees and property taxes are really our biggest individual sources that are there to support the general fund, fund-wide. You know, you can see also the transit and the intergovernmental revenues. You know, that, the federal and state, particularly the federal, can be fairly significant. But it's, you know, it's typically tied to, if we've got more reimbursements in transit federal, that means we've probably spent more on capital.
And you did print this out for us Tuesday.
That's right.
Is this different than what we got Tuesday night?
It might be slightly different, but I think it's fairly close right now.
Can you go to the bottom again, just so we can take a bit of the bottom? Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, so the bottom, yeah. So, we're, we're showing the projection of 56.3 million dollars in revenues in '25, to end '25, and then projected 53, almost 53 and a half million dollars for...
Is that conservative? Like, do you feel like, to Neil's question earlier about it, fluctuation, would we?
We, we were, we were conservative on all estimates, particularly like sales tax. We kept it flat. We just looked at the last 12 months of collections that we had and said, that's what it's going to be. So, if we get any, any economic growth at all, it's going to go to the benefit. The one area that we did increase our projections was where we, we did, we did project a 10% increase on the property tax because of the reassessment, the revaluation that, that we've seen in the data that we got.
The only thing that I have concerns about as it relates to revenue in '26 is, you know, we've, we're coming off of a record high in '23, I think.
Yes.
'24 dipped a little bit. '25 dipped a little bit. I don't know where, you know, '26 is, we're kind of, kind of going down slightly, but not, it's not dropping off the face of the earth. It's just a percentage or so. So, we got to be mindful of that. So, you've kept, you've kept, you kept those sales tax numbers the same as '24 numbers?
Well, we really just, we just kind of do a look back at the last 12 months. So...
I was about to say, because this is a 7.7 million dollar difference.
Do what?
You're talking about a 7.7 million dollar difference in income. Am I seeing that right? From '24 actuals?
Josh, scroll back up to the tax.
If you're looking at the '24 actuals, so there's, so, you know, one thing is, we had a lot more bank deposits and high interest rates. So, the interest is a big factor there. We had three point, or about $1.6 million.
Director Camp, is your question just about county sales tax?
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to get my...
You were looking at the total, weren't you?
I'm trying to look at the totals, and I, when I see it at the bottom, the bottom of the page, 2024 actuals is...
$5 million airport.
61, 61,199. And that's what I was trying to figure out. What's this making this 7.7 million dollar difference?
$5 million airport funds that...
One time.
That we came, that came back to us?
Okay.
In '24.
And then you mentioned another one just now, the 1.1?
Well, yeah, we were getting, we were getting, you know, record levels of interest income off our, off our...
Which closes it down to 1.6.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And then also, the 911 funds, you know, there was, there was $1.1 million at the top there in the intergovernmental. You know, that was coming in to, you know, we had expenditures to offset that in '24 and '26. We're, that stuff is being accounted for in its own fund. So, that's, you're seeing some variations there.
Can you spend maybe a minute, two minutes and a half for the folks that are watching, and anybody that's interested in this topic? What, what goes into projecting? Like, what is, what is kind of the, the process there? What's your sweet spot? What are some factors that you look at? You know, because it's, I mean, there's obviously a little bit of art, a little bit of science. Can you talk to us a little bit about your mentality with that?
And every different, every revenue source, we can, we'll look at it a little differently. But, you know, as far as, you know, the largest one, the sales tax, we always stay conservative. But we also pay attention to what our, you know, what are, what the, just the national economic situation is, and then also, you know, you know, the state budgets collection, sales tax collections as well. And they're on a June 30 year. So, you can, we can see what their budget is for the June 30, '27 fiscal year, and say, what did they, what did they see? You know, they did, they did like a 1.8% growth in sales tax collections in their budgets, what I recall. So, you know, we can, we can take clues from the state level. You know, we can look at, we can look at how our, you know, unemployment is. We can take anecdotal evidence. Do we know, you know, are we having, are we, are we losing employment or jobs, you know, here locally? You know, you want to, you definitely want to try to take into account losses that you have, but you don't, you know, but we're hesitant to count the gains that we think we're going to have until we see that we're going to realize those gains. So...
Sure.
That's kind of how we do that. And then, you know, some of the things, you know, the grant revenues, things, those are typically based to events that are going to occur. Do we plan to get, do we know we're going to get those type of things? So, those things are more specific. You know, a lot of the other ones, you know, the smaller revenues, the permit fees and those type of things, you know, we just look at what we've, the trends that we've had in the last, you know, year or two.
Sure. And so, like, for instance, on sales tax, you know, we collected an actual amount of 24.492 million dollars. You know, we're projecting 24.5 originally budget, 25, 25.1, looking ahead next year, 24.5 a shade over that. So...
Right.
Anticipating a very similar, you know, third year running when it comes to, to tax collection.
Correct.
Okay.
So, and one other thing I wanted to ask before we dive into them as well is, the 10.1 million, but that's counting every department as they submitted so far with new equipment added in, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, as we're looking at balancing this, it's probably just prudent to really dive in on the capex conversations. Is that fair to say?
The last number I saw there is about $3.7 million of capital requests in those figures. I don't think that number has changed. I don't remember if we've changed any of that in here so far.
3.7, just for the general fund only?
Yes, just for general fund.
On equipment?
Yeah, on equipment.
Thank you.
And so, and so when you're talking about a $10 million deficit and 3.7 is capital, then the balance is in operating and personnel?
So, does this sort of lead us into item three, which was?
Yep.
Which is reviewing the dollars available to spend?
Yep. So, the, so the next item is the distribution of appropriations. So, I think this is, this was handed out Tuesday night. And, you know, I don't have a ton of comments on this. I mean, but you can see the individual programs that feed up into that summary that make up the expenditures. And you can see where certain programs are allocated across the funds. Tonight, you know, we're particularly focused on general fund with the departments that we're looking at. So, I don't know if anything... Anything, see if there's anything significant we need to point out that we haven't already covered.
While, while he's looking at that, Director Martin, what audit am I looking for that tells me the numbers of department? You said there was an audit report, man, on the back of the report.
So look at the external audit. So the one that's done by four of us?
The one we did in June?
Uh, yeah, yeah. The one we did in June. It, it won't be under our regular internal audit, I don't believe. The internal audit, audits, it's the, the CAPFR, uh.
ACFR.
CAFR, CAFR, C-A-F-R. What's that stand for?
It's, they've changed it. It's.
I'm sorry, ACFR.
Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
Right. So, yeah, if you look in the back of that, 10 years' worth of, by department. And you can see around 20, well, we might be rolling off, but 2015, when the consent decree came into being, you see a big rise in water and sewer, or in utilities to cover that. It's, it's just, it's really interesting to see. I've actually, I think I've got it on my iPad, too.
I think we can move on to the next item.
Just to be clear though, I mean, this is a jumping off point. This is the wish list, right? I mean, we've got to balance the budget, 10, a 10 million, million dollar deficit.
I think every, the capital request in particular is pretty, you know, I think everyone just added everything that they were looking to, to get, so.
Well, and to be fair with that, we did ask them to, you know, in terms of capital, you know, include the capital that you think you need. And so, I mean, it's not necessarily just a wish list, but we did ask them, I mean, they're mind, I mean, all the departments are mindful of, you know, what we're, what we're dealing with here, but they did, we did ask them to include capital that they need.
So as it references to item three here on the agenda with reviewing dollars available to spend in the general fund for, uh, setting of the conversation, if you're looking at the budget comparison summary document, is it then accurate to say that you all are projecting currently that there should be around 53.5 million dollars available to spend in projected revenue as it relates to the general fund?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Now this, this next exercise will kind of walk through that, you know, just kind of see, you know, potentially way of looking at that, so. So this, this, you know, pie chart here, you know, this will tie to that next schedule that's behind, behind there. Um, this just shows that the, uh, we look back at the three-year actual expenditures from 22 to 24 by department in the general fund and, you know, just see who, you know, what, which departments are using what percentage of our, of the expenditures in the general fund, um, kind of how, how are our general fund expenditures allocated by department? And so that's kind of the, um, so we kind of calculate that just to look at historically, you know, when, when we talk about priority-based budgeting and those type of concepts is how much money do you want to put, you know, how much of your pie do you want to go towards public safety?
Sure.
Parks and Rec and those type of things.
And for those who are watching, who maybe can't see the graphic or the colors or what have you, is it accurate to say that over the last three years, 54% of general fund dollars have been spent on the police department and the fire department?
That's correct.
All right.
Yes. It's on your, uh, it'll be on the printout on the next page. So we can go to the next, uh. Yeah.
The target allocation of available resources page?
Yeah, so you do have a copy of this. So basically, it's kind of an exercise that we went through this afternoon and, and, you know, we said, okay, what, what are the average dollar spend of our general fund by department over the last three years? And you can see the, the, you see the, the three-year average column and the percentages on the right, those tie back to the graph, um, there. And then, um, and so, so the scenario is, okay, so if we, if, you know, if we expect that we're going to have revenues of 53 and a half million dollars for 26, then how much can each department spend theoretically and have a balanced budget? You know, this is a very top-level, you know, way of thinking, but we use the same percentages. If they all spend the same percentage that they typically spend in the last three years, what, you know, what does that dollar looks like? And then also, what does that do? You know, you can see at the bottom. You know, keep, continuing on with the fund balance that we're projecting to have at the end of 25, if we balance the budget this way, our contingency reserve percentage would be 33.4%.
So is an accurate way to use this chart in front of us, we'll look at 4405 internal audit, to fit the balanced number target that we would need of, you know, 53.5, is the accurate way to read this, that internal audit, for example, would have to spend 46, would be spending, would have allocated to it 46% less than its three-year preceding average?
Well, basically, it would have to cut its request by 46%.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
And if, I might add just to that, I mean, looking at that same example, internal audit, where it says the 73,467 three-year average, that's just out of the general fund. Now that, that, right, okay.
And as helpful as this is, because it is interesting to look at, um, I mean, you're going to have to cut, you're, you're asking 4.8 for police, 3.2 for fire, and 1 million for IT. I mean, I, I don't, don't know if that's doable. You know, I don't think an even cut here, you know, as looking at, although it's interesting to see.
I'm saying this is just an exercise. I'm not saying that's what we should do. There are other factors in here that affect some of these numbers as well. For instance.
Is this what they're asking for, or this is just part of the exercise?
The, uh, the, the 26 preliminary budget column is the, is the ask, was the request that that came in.
Okay.
So we, you know, we, and this should agree back to the summary that we looked at earlier. We, you know, 63.6 million dollars in total expenditures.
If I'm reading this right, so like, take the 4101 Board of Directors, it's showing over or, or under. Can you explain that?
So there, yeah, there are, there are a few things that are, because we've restructured some things. For instance, the Blue Lion expenditures were in the three-year average before, but now we have a new facilities group at the bottom, uh, 4503, where, where we're, where the expenditures for the Blue Lion, you know, we purchased the building and the maintenance expenses for that. We've, we've got a maintenance crew, uh, to serve all the, you know, all the main city buildings, Cardinal Hall expenditures. So you can see like 4503, there are, there is zero dollars spent because that is a new program inside. And you kind of, it's just restructuring.
How does, how does 5520 Citizen Services, how are they 237,000 under?
Um, that because, um, Citizen Services. That one I'm not, that's not, 55, that's collections, right?
We got Community Mobility's given some positive, or is under?
So if the.
We haven't, we haven't reviewed that one yet, I don't think.
If the facilities line is for the maintenance of the building, where are we seeing the reduction for the rent we're not paying now for the building?
Good question.
The rent is in, um, you know, we converted the rent over into, uh, maintenance expenses for the most part.
Is that in the facilities line?
Right. It was in purchasing at one time, yeah. The lease, the lease budget was in purchasing. We transferred that budget.
Was it what, 37,000 a month?
Yes, it was about that.
Yeah, and so that, that's, yeah, that's for the City Hall building, and the same thing really is true for the difference in the Board of Directors one, because we were paying a lease out of that one that's no longer. But, but yes, that was the, the building lease for the City Hall building that we purchased, when we were paying the lease, it was out of the purchasing program.
Okay. But purchasing is only down at 107,000 dollars, and that's three months' rent. So what about the rest of it?
Like I said, the, the amounts there are just representative of the general fund. So the other, the, the other three funds contributed to that as well. So there's a reduction in those for purchasing as well.
What about non-departmental, 2.5 million under?
Um, in the last three years, we had the purchase of the building, all those other, um, the.
Well, we don't have it in this one. It's a deposit.
We, you know, we, we supported the airports, the barrier project. There's a lot of.
So it's an interesting exercise, but it definitely, it's, it doesn't fix, it's not the silver bullet.
That's right.
And, and this document here represents, we're talking about just general fund dollars.
That's right.
Could you, uh, again, for the sake of the conversation, walk down this list that's in front of us and denote for us on this list which ones of these, if any, are completely funded by the general fund?
Uh, yeah, that would be, um, the, the courts, city prosecutor, public defender, communication, well, no, communications, community mobility.
City attorney.
City attorney gets allocated. Um, let's see.
You said mobility?
Yep.
4408?
So you are including the city attorney in that list?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, building safety, police and fire, parks and rec for the most part. There's a little bit of allocation for the mowing of right-of-ways and things. Miss Laura's health services and, um, the non-departmental categories. Those are the, those are the ones that are 100% general.
What are we budgeting for Miss Laura's for?
Not, not anymore.
Or not, correct?
Yeah, we've got, uh, the proposed.
It used to be.
Number for Miss Laura's is 267,000 for 26.
Who? I'll come, come back to that. I'm, I'm not really passionate about that at all. Thank you.
Does Miss Laura's bring in any sort of income, or is it, is that taking this into account?
It brings in a little bit, but it really doesn't cover that level of expense.
That seems like a high expense for just one. Is it because it's a historic building? I mean, then.
I, I think a lot of that is driven by the fact that there are some facility improvements that are needed to happen, and those are sort of, um, scheduled for, you know, our initial year here. We've got a siding project, there's some restructuring inside and things like that.
The hail damage, and then there was going to be some insurance money, right? Did we ever see that back?
That was already, I think that work's already been done.
I think so, too.
Okay, so this is separate?
I think there was like a big, uh, maybe siding that needed to be replaced and.
Who runs that?
Uh, we have a contract with, um, with AMP Commission basically to manage that for us.
I thought we turned it back over to the city because AMP didn't want it.
Well, they are still managing it, um, but the employees and the operations and such are starting to hit this budget now, a general fund budget where it wasn't before, before it was rolled into AMP's expenses. And so that's why we're seeing this, um, the 26 preliminary budget column has numbers, whereas the previous three-year average doesn't.
Does the transit line, does that include the reimbursements transit receives?
It's not, that's a gross expense number, so there could be, there could be revenues associated with get reimbursements, yeah.
Because sometimes they're reimbursed, what, 80, 90%? I mean, it's quite high.
Most of the capital is about 80, yeah, 80, 20, federal, local. I think the operate, most of the operating is 50, 50 for the most part.
Okay.
Are we in agreement in a contract for this Laura's house? Is that a company that we contracted in a term like OVG?
There's like a, there's a kind of a, yeah, they're similar to that. There's a management agreement between the AMP Commission and, and the city.
Okay.
I think that was done maybe a year ago. It's fairly, you know, I think that was something that was approved about a year ago. Yeah. So anyway, but, you know, um, so we're showing a balanced budget's going to get us 33.4% you know, potentially in our, you know, that, that would substantially build up our reserve. I did notice that, you know, if we wanted to, just to get it back to the 25% target that we were looking at, that would be a, they cut that, um, that 10 million dollar deficit in 26, cut it 3 and a half million dollars at 6.6, and that would get our, um, targeted fund balance at 25%.
I think that's, that's good to see, that, that projection right there. So balanced, where we're, nothing, no, no expenditures over, uh, revenues, we'd be at the end of 26, 33.4% fund balance. Okay. Which of course, then you have the conversation about what, what is the correct number of a reserve? And I think opinions probably vary on that item.
So Andy, or, or so. So are, it's not. Are you saying that the, the general fund is showing a 4 million, 4.2 million dollar payout for the water slides? Is, is there, was there still more expense there?
That's part of 20, I think those numbers were in 24 and 25. Those are already counted.
They're already figured, they're already figured in as, as expense.
Right.
So, okay. You sure?
I mean, it's part of, it's, you know, some of it's, you know, we paid 2 million dollars roughly in 24 to actually buy them.
Yeah.
And then there, the rest of that 4.2 was towards the installation and shipping and construction and so.
But that hadn't been paid yet, right?
It hasn't been paid, but that's part of your 25, it's.
The money's in there.
The 25 projected numbers, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
The rest of that.
Thank you.
So could you review again, just briefly, because I know you have it annotated right here for 33.4%, but you said if we wanted to hit a target of 25%, but it's not on here.
You cut 3 and a half million.
Cut 3 and a half million off of the.
And you get the deficit down to six, instead of 10.1, you get it down to 6.6 for 26.
And, and what, will you remind us as well, on the books, what is the current number that we're mandated to have for, for the reserve fund? What, what's the, there's a mandatory percentage, correct?
Well, to me, to me, it's kind of.
Or it's a threshold below which.
It's a two-tier, it's a two-tier level where basically you need to maintain 20%. If you don't, then you should cut capital.
Yes.
Get below 15, you start cutting operating, that, there's a policy there. But in order to invest in capital improvements and things, that you need to be above 25%. So between 20 and 25, you're safe, but it kind of dictates, well, you can't really do anything extra.
Like cemeteries.
Do your normal operating activity.
Water slides.
As noble as those things are, you can't, yeah.
Buildings, can't do any of that stuff.
Andy, we talked about on Tuesday removing the positions that have been vacant for a year or more. Is that reflected in here anywhere?
It hasn't been reflected. I think we do have some information coming up about those numbers.
I'd like to see what that looks like.
Well, I think we have some information for you coming up here on that.
I mean, I mean, ultimately, it would be reflected if those dollars weren't spent here. I mean, because we're just showing the three-year average of dollars actually spent in terms of, so if, you know, the position was vacant for a good number of, of a year, then that.
I do think.
That wouldn't be included there.
Well, I don't know where I'm seeing utilities. I missed that?
No, they're not part of the general fund.
Right. So that's what I was wanting to see was the 40 positions in utilities. What does that look like? Because some of those have been, most of those have been vacant as long as I've been on the board.
Bring Eric up and he can probably answer some of them.
But I, game plan is, we're going to talk utilities like, just like this, in a, at some point. Right. Here, just use mine. Why not? Sharing's caring. Uh, so there should be, on the bottom of your deck, should be a slide that looks like that. I don't know if you can go ahead and pull that up. So at, at your request, I went in and looked at all of the vacant positions that exist within the city as of yesterday that aren't being actively recruited for or hired for. So there's 35 positions in the city that are reflected in that. 35 total positions.
Total or just in utilities?
No, that's, that's citywide. There's 35, yeah, 35 vacant positions. There's 24 non-uniform positions.
No, that's, that's citywide, there's thirty-five, yeah, thirty-five vacant positions, there's twenty-four non-uniform positions, five positions in the fire department and six positions in the police department. This slide here only represents non-uniform, it does not include uniform, there's about seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in salaries for uniform positions that's not reflected in here, which is a hundred percent general fund. And so like I said, that's five positions, uh, in the fire department and six positions in the police department that are currently vacant as of yesterday. And then an additional twenty-four positions throughout the city that are non-uniform positions in various, various areas of the city. So what this reflects is that those twenty-four positions that are vacant, this is, uh, shows you exactly how much of that would be, would be in effect if we just froze those positions, if we did away with them and this is an annuitized amount for the entire year, uh, it would be about a twenty-five, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar savings to the general fund. So about twenty-two percent of the one point two million dollars, uh, that you see there.
But this slide is non-uniformed positions?
Correct, yes, yes, everything on here is non-uniformed positions, so that, that one point two, the, the total amount, uh, is to the tune of just a little over two million dollars total for vacant positions. If you, what, what you were asking about, being able to.
Positions that have been open for a year or longer?
Well, this, this is all positions, so this is a position whether it was opened for two days or two years. Most of the positions that you're thinking about were cut in May, and so those are not reflected in here. Out of all of the positions that I have on this list, uh, two of the non-uniform positions have been vacant for longer than a year, but I also have a position on here that was vacant for two days, eleven days, a hundred days. So this, this is every vacant position, and this is again, this is non-uniform, full-time positions that are vacant.
So that's a lower number than I was thinking it was going to be.
Yeah, because of the allocation, so most of those positions, um, are, are allocated, and so the ones that are a hundred percent general fund, as Andy said, those are going to be in the parks department, the police department and the fire department for the most part, there are some other ancillary departments that are smaller, those don't really have vacancies in there. And so that's why it's one point three million dollars for thirty-five positions, I'm sorry, for twenty-seven positions and it's seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for eleven positions.
So did the utilities department add about seventy positions when we got into consent decree?
Uh, I mean, I couldn't directly speak to that, I wasn't here when that occurred.
In twenty fifteen, there were two hundred and twenty-three positions in water and sewer. We now have budgeted at the end of twenty-four, three hundred and five.
And there, and there was, there was a schedule of seventy-seven and, um, positions that were adopt, that was adopted in two thousand and fifteen.
So that's more than this thirty we're talking about, are those positions all filled then, is that what I hear you saying?
I, I would say a majority of the positions that Director Katsavas was referring to were the ones that were frozen in May because those were primarily the utilities department. I would say eighty percent of that, I have to go back and look at the numbers, nine hundred, one point one million dollars in positions that were frozen. Uh, I would say three quarters to eighty percent of those, uh, were in the utilities department and those are a lot of the positions that were vacant for quite some time. But because of the allocation share, most of those, most of the positions that are reflected in here are shared allocations. So the percentage share is anywhere from about twenty to thirty percent to the general fund. So that's why you're only looking at about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in savings out of those positions.
So to my colleague Director Martin, you're saying twenty fifteen, two twenty-three there, twenty twenty-five, three oh five.
Twenty, twenty-four, three oh five.
Three, four, three oh five, so I mean, eighty-two new employees, that's a lot.
It, it looks, so, so just for benefit, twenty fifteen, two twenty-three, twenty sixteen, two sixty-four, twenty seventeen, two seventy, and then twenty eighteen, three oh two. So it was like, as those rate increases came in in fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, we were hiring people for the consent decree and then it's kind of stayed flat since then.
Interesting.
So we kind of, we kind of see that consent decree playing a role there.
And it's a thing that you're pointing out that, uh, when we made budget adjustments and revisions back in May, we did, uh, a lot of work when it comes to, um, getting unfilled positions off the books and having an impact on the budget. I mean, there, there's a few dozen more, obviously, which is what this chart reflects, but we did take that positive step back in May.
Correct, yes.
And, and you all, Jeff and Andy, are not contemplating, uh, you know, restoring or unfreezing, you know, the ones that we took away that weren't filled back in May?
That's correct.
That's correct, and let me ask one question, a good example I remember, because I, you know, lobbied for it and I find that we took, chose the path we chose, but the position that was open in planning was there because they had a promotion where they promoted and, and so there was, I think, eighty thousand or something of that nature is about all they could bring to the table because their department's pretty much, it is truncated to what it is. But, uh, I just think we need to factor that in, I mean, if you have Maggie as a deputy city administrator and you want that to happen and then their staff is already this one slot open, I don't know how that impacts planning, but I think administration having honest conversations about some of these holes. And then I just, I still, which I know we'll get to it when we talk to it, but I think we, based on what I'm hearing in dialogue, we consult out a lot of stuff for consent decree work. Or we bid it out, I'm, I'm still trying to wrap my mind around eighty-two new employees in the utilities, doesn't help this general fund conversation, so I don't want to get us off the, the rails on it, but I just want to make that comment, thank you.
But yes, this is, I, I think this is what you were asking for though, to see if, if we went in and said, as of today, we're freezing all positions. You know, and, and to that end as well, uh, you know, since there's a mention on there of turnover, uh, you know, you're looking at, at roughly about an eighteen percent turnover in the city. So eighteen percent of those positions will go vacant or will become vacant at some time.
Just, just for, for benefit, um, for everybody, general government, so I, I'm assuming that's a general fund. In twenty fifteen, there was a hundred and twenty-six FTEs, at the end of twenty-four, there's a hundred and seventy-four, that's forty-eight new positions. Divide that by one twenty-six, that's a thirty-eight percent increase in ten years. Which that would probably get us exactly what we're talking about tonight.
Which, yeah, which I mean, I think, it's interesting to know, I mean, maybe it is in that regard what it is, I just think we ought to think, how did we grow that way? You know, and, and what ways is this positive and look at it and give an answer to these questions?
Now you say that turnover number of eighteen percent, is there any context you're able to provide for that, how that compares to other entities of similar size, other, you know, et cetera?
So to give you an idea, the, the benchmark from the Bureau of Labor Statistics is seventeen point eight. So that's, that, that puts us, you know, we're still very competitive, correct? Yes, that's, that's, that's the measurement that I use to compare and see where we're at, uh, when it comes to turnover, yes.
Thank you for that context.
You're welcome.
So Andy, if I'm reading the agenda right, are we now to, to six?
Yep. Is six, six is, we're going to parks, right? So we do have, there are handouts for the parks programs?
Fire.
Is it fire first, okay?
And what do these handouts represent?
Uh, the, those are the actual individual programs, what's that? Yeah. Yeah. It would probably be a good idea. Is that one working? Yeah, it's working. Yep.
And Chief, as we, as we, you know, dive in, um, you know, we got some news, um, you know, you announced your retirement coming up. And we just want to publicly thank you for many, many years and decades of service and leadership to our community, um, for coming in and serving as the fire chief, you know, in, in a very difficult time with the passing of our former chief. And, and just, we all are very appreciative of the job that you've done and your entire department, and so congratulations on a pending, you know, well-earned retirement and, uh, just thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, I truly. I truly enjoyed every day that I was at the fire department, for the most part of the time, it didn't even feel like it was a job until, you know, got a little bit further up in the food chain, but after that. Before that, it really wasn't even like a job, just absolutely loved serving for the citizens over here, it was, it was a great opportunity and I've loved it.
What do you have to share with us this evening regarding the, the budget items?
Uh, what do you need to know, we did our budget, preliminary budget bill this morning, so what are you needing to know from me? Like we went through and cut everything that we could cut, I mean, even down to five hundred dollars in some spots, uh, all the way up to fifty, sixty thousand dollars in other spots where we knew we wouldn't need it, so.
I think for me, your two questions, high level, when you talked about you already made cuts, if you can kind of give an overview of it, just kind of so we can kind of feel for that?
Yes, like for the medical services, we had originally budgeted to have all of the guys' physicals done, to be NFPA, you know, the NFPA physicals. Well, we ended up getting a grant for that, so we no longer needed that money because the grant paid for it, so there's fifty thousand right off the top right there. And it was just items like that, the, well, like me talking about the extrication tools, you know, earlier in the year, they all passed and so we took all that out of the budget now. And it's just items like that.
They all passed, what do you mean by that?
Uh, we have to have them serviced every year and they go through a rigorous test and if they don't pass, that's, you know, when we have to get them replaced.
So you, you budgeted for them to be replaced?
Yes, because by the age of them, they're, I mean, they could technically age out, but right now they're still all right.
Okay.
What about new equipment, I mean, is there any new equipment in here?
Yeah, I was gonna.
For next years or for?
For next years.
Yeah, I was going to ask Andy, Jeff or the chief, because if, if we're following correctly, the numbers that we're working with to start out with, do reflect the, um, capital expenses, the equipment needs reflected, could you highlight or pull out for us what those are for the fire department?
So the, um, so these individual programs, you'll see capital listed on these programs towards the bottom or on the second page of these summaries. So if I'm looking at forty-eight oh one admin, um, there's no capital request for two thousand and twenty-four, I think suppression and rescue, if you look at the bottom there. We've got vehicles and other equipment totaling three hundred and ninety thousand in the request for the twenty-six budget, so you can see that towards the bottom of that first page for forty-eight oh two, suppression and rescue.
It should be a little bit higher than that because that compressor, Station Seven, didn't get moved over, so we gotta add that.
I think we've got, sounds like we've got some other adjustments to make there, but that's.
Which line item was it, and I know you're talking about making adjustments, yeah.
It's the forty-eight oh two capital improvement, let me see, I look up the line item, it's at the very bottom. The five-three-one-one-zero-zero is the vehicles, that's for four vehicles and I've budgeted two hundred and forty thousand for that. The capital outlay improvement's other, there's a hundred and fifty, but we, I had messed up and put one in the wrong spot, so I need to add that compressor into it. We're wanting to add a compressor to Station Seven that fills our air bottles, it's going to keep the trucks from driving as far a distance to have to fill them up, save life on the truck and that way we're not having to purchase the two million dollar truck as often as we have to.
Yeah, so, and how we.
Put a whole lot of thought into doing stuff like that to where they have to travel less.
From our, from our, uh, fire trucks, um, you know, the, the pumpers?
Yes.
How, how are we doing age-wise on those?
We're still doing all right, um, we're stretching them out a little bit further than they need to be, but we're keeping, instead of trading them in, we're keeping extra reserves so that way we're always going to have a vehicle to drive, so.
That's, 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 that's one area I don't want to, I don't want to mess with, right?
I agree.
We're gonna, we're gonna spend, that's where we're gonna spend.
Yeah, speak to the refurbishment program also that we're doing.
Yes, we've got two right now in Las Vegas doing refurbishments on Pumper Five and Pumper Ten, so, and that was to the tune of. One point, one million, what, yeah.
Refurbishment?
Refurbishment, we're talking frame off, new motor, new transmission, you know.
One point one million?
Yes, and that's for both of them, so it was like, yes, it was like five hundred.
Six fifty, or five fifty something.
Five fifty a piece, something like that.
Versus four million bucks.
Yeah, uh, the pumpers are about one point two right now, so versus two point four million.
What about that in regards to when, there was discussion when I was just auditing these meetings about Tahos to keep the.
That's where.
The big truck from going out and taking the abuse of that call.
That's where the capital outlay of the four vehicles, two of those would be Tahos and we would place them at ladder stations that are at the opposite ends and it would save the life of those ladders tremendously.
I think it's a good idea, because I'm with Director Martin, I, this is not an area I want to go look to cut.
Yeah.
You guys respond to things all the time and we need it.
So. I was just going to say, so Jeff and Andy, as we move forward through these in the different departments in the days ahead, you know, since you had taken to heart what we've said about including, you know, some of those multi-year or longer standing equipment needs, could those be, you know, grouped together and pulled out specifically highlighted for us rather than, you know, hey, it's at the bottom of this one and then add it to the bottom of that one? And just as we move forward in these, since that's something that is slightly different, uh, in this process, could you please highlight out for us?
Certainly, and I think we do have a schedule built that I don't know if we provided you at all, but just, just highlights the capital requests in general.
Provided the capital request schedule.
Okay.
That shows everything.
Right, and some of those schedules that we referenced earlier were in the actual packet from Tuesday night also, so they might not be in a hard copy that you collected.
These budget schedules are very, I mean, almost identical to what we will put in the proposed budget. And so, you know, these, the, the program expenditures here feed up to the distribution of, uh, schedules that we showed earlier that, you know, these, and then feeds up into the summary. So this is really kind of just drilling down into those totals. The, the printout, the munis printout that's behind these, um, schedules that look like that for each one of these programs is the detail of these numbers and so for, you know, the capital, the, the, we put capital in here, so if you can, you look through there, you know, there are capital, um, there's detail about what capital items are listed here, um, that support this number in the schedule.
Sure.
And so that's available, um.
Sure, I mean, there's a, there's a detail level of course for us, which is helpful. But again, I think for folks that are just following along or trying to observe this at the top line, being able to see, you know, hey, the fire department, four hundred thousand dollars of, you know, new equipment built, you know, that, that level, thank you.
Okay.
Steve, do you, when, if we talk about this, when the sales, when the sales tax expires, what's going to have, what's, that's going to change the dynamic?
Yes, uh, it's right now projected, I think, twenty thirty-one, twenty thirty-two.
When it expires?
Not when it expires, uh, that's when it'll run out of money.
Twenty thirty, okay.
About twenty thirty-two, somewhere in that neighborhood, which, and that's by us stretching the trucks out and.
Just that one fund though, right?
Yes, sir, that's the forty-eight oh three tax.
And the taxes, the taxes is due when?
Uh, is it twenty twenty-eight? Is it twenty thirty, twenty thirty?
And it's three percent? Something like that?
No, it's a quarter percent sales tax.
A quarter percent sales tax.
Yeah.
Okay, is that enacted by the board or by the voters?
Voters.
By the voters.
Voters.
Yes, sir.
So they don't enact it, then there's going to be some issues.
Yes, because I think roughly, I can tell you here in just a second, it's roughly like three point one million.
Three point one, yeah.
So that three point one would go straight into the general fund.
Yeah.
You know, come out of the general fund.
That could be a big hit.
Yes, yes, it would.
Well, and I think the, the thing to look at is, is us being a, what's it called, that's not a Schedule One, but a.
Oh, uh, yes.
A, a one rating.
One rating.
Which keeps.
ISO rating.
ISO, thank you.
Insurance rating, yeah.
Keeps our, our, my, my homeowner's insurance down.
Yes.
So I, I, I think there's a, there's a direct correlation to my pocketbook and my checkbook through that, so.
Chief, is there, is this, is this saying no to some things that you think we should be aware of as directors that is going to have an impact, kind of the law of unintended consequences?
No, the, everything we have in here, we, like I've told you before, we really don't put a lot of fluff in there and we ask for what we really truly need or we feel like we're going to need. So like I said, some stuff, and Jeff and I talked about it, but I'd already put it in there, like some of the stuff I could not put in there, like the extrication. equipment, and then try and come back and get it reallocated later. But, you know, I already had it in here. So.
Good.
But no, we ask for everything we need.
Any other questions for the chief?
I might just, and Director Rego just sort of asked me this question, but in terms of the apparatus replacement and schedule for that, those aren't reflected in these numbers. But if you might speak a little bit to what your upcoming schedule is on, on that and the use of that sales tax money?
Don't have it right now in front of me, but we already have one ladder truck, two ladder trucks on order. Yes, we have two ladder trucks on order. We're looking at a rescue truck right now. And just be simply, we have to have them on order because it's so far out. Then we'll start ordering, when we order the rescue truck, we'll order a pumper and a rescue at the same time on it. Just so, that's just the way the schedule works for coming out. We have everything planned out. As far as like a 10-year plan is what it was, we've kind of stretched it out to like 11 and 12 for like our apparatus, just to try and make them last a little longer. But that's where I said, you know, we're keeping more reserves as well. So that way, the citizens are never in any danger.
I may need like a little bit of education on difference between a ladder truck, pumper truck.
The pumper is the ones that you see, just the.
I mean, right, right. So when he says ladder truck, I, it doesn't.
You climb the ladder of fire.
Well, I know that, I know that. But I, I, I think I'd like to maybe, give me, I'm dumb, give me some pictures or something like that.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
Well, you remember the last truck we brought down? The, I mean, big old long one had the huge ladder on top of it.
I might have been late for that meeting.
You might have been late on that one. That's what, that's the ladder trucks.
Okay.
But yeah.
Yeah, give me, give me, give me a picture. Give me a picture.
You could send us some information.
And give me, give me a dollar amount for each one of those.
Okay.
I think that'll help me long term.
Well, the other, the other thing that's good to know is the lead time on those. Because the ladder trucks are about, what, three and a half or four years?
They're three and a half. The rescue truck, when we've been talking to them about it, it's right at four years for it. And then the pumpers are roughly, you know, two and a half, three, something like that.
I mean, I know, I'll, I'll, I drive down Phoenix to go to work and sometimes that, they're backing in the, the truck.
That's a pumper truck.
That's a pumper truck?
That's a pumper truck.
Yeah, I just, maybe if I looked at them, I'd know what we're talking about.
Oh, they're all just red and white.
Yeah. So yeah, give me some pics.
Totally understand.
The manufacturing too, there's only a few places that manufacture these, right? And so that's part of the problem?
Yes. And no, I mean, there's some others that manufacture them, but we don't like the quality of their manufacturing. So, you know, there's a couple that we've really, really looked at and that Pierce still stands out above everybody. Like when we replaced one of the last ladder trucks, we sure enough had them go head to head. And the place that didn't do as good a job actually was a little bit higher. So.
Okay. I know it's pretty limited and I think Congress was looking at it from an antitrust standpoint. Maybe nothing's happened with that yet, but that's something I've been following.
Yeah, I know one group bought like a bunch of the smaller brands. And so, and that's where they feel like it's, yeah.
Just a new guy question. This administration, is this what's coming from general fund or is most of this coming from general fund except the 18 sales obviously is not?
Everything's coming from general fund except for the 4803.
And there were groupings here. There were three groupings that are there. Is this just, just because it's that many paper? Andy, was there any science to these three groupings or?
I mean, the groupings are for each division or program of fire.
Right. Like 4801 is our administration and stuff. 4802 is the suppression, the putting out the fires and the operations and everything. 4803, of course, is the tax. And then 4804 is our training program.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. All right. I think next up, 6B is the Parks Department. Sarah, did you have any introductory comments, particularly maybe highlighting the equipment stuff that's included for you in this one?
Yeah, absolutely. If you don't mind, I kind of have, I haven't had a chance to send this to admin. If you want to know the truth, I was out in the field doing some field things. Yes. So just kind of an overview, our budget, I kind of looked at, I did a comparison to what we're requesting this year versus the amended budget. And it looks like we're, our personnel and operating, we're decreasing that by over 600 grand. But if you look at that, that really wasn't a fair comparison because we had a lot of carryforwards with the hail damage, the roof repairs. So based on our original budget and what we're proposing in personnel and operations, we're cutting it over 275 grand. Now with that, we do have some substantial capital requests. I think we all know we need equipment. And with that, we are absolutely not too proud to take something from another department that maybe has a healthier fund balance if we can. And we have had those conversations, but no one really has a truck or anything that we can. But we are at the point to where we need equipment.
You still need those two trucks? We talked about three years ago.
We're to three trucks now.
Three trucks?
Yes. And you have the budget details. I'll just give you an example. We're out about 10 grand right now because our truck at the cemetery, it lost control, couldn't do anything, and it ran into a retaining wall. The retaining wall, we weren't repairing. So that's what we're trying to do. But, I mean, we can only Band-Aid them so far. So whenever you incorporate what we're reducing in personnel and operations and adding our additional capital requests, we're still reducing that by over 50 grand from last year's original budget.
So just to recap some understanding, you've included your equipment you need, you're still coming in 50 grand from last year?
Yes. And we have not had our meeting with admin and finance. We have that tomorrow morning. And Brian, my deputy and I, we've really looked at this. And we do think there's some cuts. And if Jeff doesn't mind me blindsiding him, I think there's one that's pretty significant. And I think it makes sense. And it's the amendment to the Act Me Property Master Plan. You know, we did that initial one for 422,000. We needed that to really have that mesh of working with engineerings. And if it's a future park, if we're going to sell that, whatever it may be. And that has really benefited this process because we've had little design changes that will develop future growth, whether it's park amenities, open space, residential development, commercial, whatever that is. So my opinion, kind of looking at the financial position of the city, let's pull off on that. So next year, that's 175 grand I can take from that.
There you go.
Wait, 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 hold on.
It does not conflict with engineering. This is totally ours.
We, we did enter the agreement with that firm to do the.
For 422,000, which gets us to all the preliminary and just pretty much three general nice pictures.
Right.
Flood mitigation though would be able to be accomplished.
That is not ours. It's still under engineering.
So that doesn't impact that.
I mean, well, hold on, let me make sure I got it. We, we went, we, we agreed to a thing with, with that company.
Yes.
What are you pulling back from that?
There was going to be an amendment to finalize that.
Okay.
So we're.
To finalize it? What do you mean?
Yes, to have a, hey, a lot of public input of what they want. But I think, I mean, we kind of recognize where we are financially. And I think we're to the point, we've helped steer kind of where those retention ponds are. And we're at that point where we can pull off and just kind of let things calm down, make sure that's still the direction we want to go.
So when, when is, when is that coming to us? I would have expected we would have had the, not the amendment.
You've already approved the initial.
We've already approved it. I'm, when are they going to be done?
They, we have a, Director Rego's on the steering committee. We have a meeting, hopefully the first or second week of October to get that. They have been working heavily with half associates, engineering, design firm. And they've, there's been a lot of background work. So hopefully we'll have something later this year.
Not to take too much time on this, but didn't we, shouldn't that already been done by now?
No, it should not have.
Okay.
They're on schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Sarah, so what is your equipment number?
It is all combined 327,000.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And that's two trucks, three trucks?
It is.
And something else or just three trucks?
It is one work truck, regular cab work truck. It's replacing a 2006. It's one that's needed to be replaced for probably 10 years. And that's okay. Another one is just two four-wheel drive crew cabs. One's replacing a 2004 and the other a 2002. And then Oak Cemetery, that's the one that it needed to go away a long time ago. We had to bring it back because we needed something. And that's replacing a 2005 dump. And we actually reduced what we thought it was going to cost. We kind of looked at it and said, hey, let's just go bare minimum because we can do all the bells and whistles all day long, but let's get what we need to see if we can actually get it.
I think it's good. Two questions. The 47,000, that's not a vehicle, is it?
Which?
It says other equipment, cap L8, other equipment, 53, 1,600?
What program?
Uh.
Oh, that's the mowers.
The mowers, okay.
Yes, sorry. We need to replace two. We have two mowers that we've just been scrapping for parts and replacing them. These are a Grasshopper and Jacobson brand. We use all Kubota's. These should have been gone a long time ago.
So it's three trucks, two mowers. That'll, that'll be huge. And then is, did we already get what you needed? You were going to get like a, kind of a side-by-side smaller truck for this downtown?
We have that.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yes. And we, I mean, again, this is something I was going to bring up in our budget meeting. But since we're here and kind of talked about personnel earlier, we had an announcement of a retirement this week. And working with HR and kind of internally, we do plan to repurpose some positions and allow us to pick up some positions in the field versus kind of an office setting. I know it's not going to be a huge cost savings, but it is some that we're trying to increase efficiency while trying to reduce some costs.
I think this is good. I think from my understanding, looking at this Parks Department, your biggest need has been having equipment so your teams can work.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Sarah?
So our, just, just kind of, because it's, it's been recent here that we talked about cemeteries. 280,000 is what you budget for Oak Cemetery. I guess you're kind of adding three additional cemeteries.
That's not in.
Yeah, I know, I know that's not. But if, if, if the board were to make those decisions to go that route, I mean, you gave us the numbers, 1. some odd million. I mean, that 280,000 for one cemetery that we have today, I mean, that's, that's a concrete number. Now, that's up from 2024, 167.
We had raises, the 3.5%.
And then the 345,000 last year included some capital. Okay.
Yes. And then also some of those, we had one-time security camera expenses. We had a lot of vandalism issues. So.
Okay. Just, cemeteries would be a tough ask, I think.
Yeah, I agree.
I can't, I can't get there either. I mean, it's really hard to think about that with these numbers that we're seeing right now. I mean, obviously, if we get to this and see some amazing new epiphany, but it's not adding to that.
Sarah, how much money does the cemetery that you've got bring in? Do you have that?
I don't have it in front of me. Honestly, Sherry's office, they handle all of that. But I do know.
Let me look in this detail. If I can, Oak Cemetery, 100,000?
Does that money go back into the Parks Department or does it go into the general?
General fund. Because that's where the cemetery is funded. So technically, you could say it does go back against that.
So it really total spend, if it's 150, is that what you said?
24 actuals, 155,000. We've got projected 100,000 for '25, a budgeted 125, projected 100,000 for '26.
So you're looking at really actual cost 180,000 in '26, if you're, if you were, if you took 100,000 off of that, 280,000 that you're spending. Okay.
Have we, I cut you off, I'm sorry if I did. Are you doing?
Go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, are we, are we seeing a decrease of gray plots being sold in our cemetery, Oak Cemetery? Or are we seeing that stay the same?
I'm not involved on that side. So I'm going to have to defer to Sherry. Sorry.
There is a little bit of a decline in 2025.
Okay.
I'd have to get those records for you though.
I mean, I, I feel compelled to say this as it relates to the cemetery issue. You know, we're not deciding it tonight, obviously, particularly given that we're not voting on anything and we're absent two members. But it's important for us to remember that the only options when it comes to the cemetery needs in our community are not do it exact, you know, spend exactly the amount Sarah proposed or spend nothing. I mean, there are other options that would be worth considering, including, you know, a phased approach, et cetera. So as we move forward on this topic and in this budget season, I would ask us to, to at least give some consideration to the idea that those are not the only two options on the table or out there in the universe. Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. Up next and last is 6C, the Police Department. Chief Baker?
Police. You want to sit by me? I'll make room. Money first, I need to be up here.
Forward and backwards. Good evening. I, I know we're pressed for time and I don't want to take any more of your time than, than is necessary. But also want to make sure that everyone's clear on what we're doing in our budget. And obviously answer any questions that you got. I put together, or actually Miranda put together a slideshow to give you a basic overview of, of what we have asked for in the budget. I know I sent out a text, everybody, when that first packet came out, it looked like the police department was making about a 2.5 million dollar ask. I knew that wasn't correct when it went out. And Andy and I have discussed it. And I think the updated information you have tonight shows us somewhere around 98,000 is the difference. But, I mean, there's a lot of things that, that come into play here. So I hope that we can, can clear that up for you. But just as an opener, as Chief Boyd said, you know, we don't ask for anything that we don't believe we need. We understand the situation that the city's in financially, and we try to be as, as fiscally responsible as we can, taking in not only our own needs, but the entire city and particularly the general fund budget. Just in the police department, you know, we, we had budget discussions a couple of months ago. You all were pretty much of the, of the mindset that you didn't want the police department to cut anything. But we still move forward with the idea of the 10% hold. We are on track to meet that at the end of, of '25. So that in and of itself will translate to about 2.4 million dollars that will be coming back from the police department to the general fund. Inflation has driven costs up in everything and in every area. But we've tried to budget in a way that we can minimize the impact of inflation on our bottom line. The majority of the increases that you see in our '26 budget are due to personnel costs. And those initial numbers did not account for the 2.5 million dollars that we contribute from the sales tax to pay for those raises that were given to the officers in 2023. And so that, that brought that number down immediately by 2.5 million. The Second Precinct in 2025, for the 2025 budget, we had asked for 1.25 million dollars to start the build on, on that, the training facility, Second Precinct and the Real-Time Crime Information Center. That was cut from our budget initially. We never, never saw those funds. They were never deposited into our, our budget. But then they were brought in, in the '26 budget. We probably need to have discussions about that. 1.25 million dollars is not going to get us started at this point. And given the situation that we're in financially as a city, I think that it would probably be wise for us to consider holding off on that maybe for a year. We're looking at several options of ways, ways that we can generate some funds to help build that. But that is, that 1.25 million is included in the numbers that you were given. There was also in a 20, in our '25 budget, an ask for 143,000 environmental control and monitoring software and equipment for our environmental controls in the building. This is a critical need. We, we paid 300,000 for a, a new cooling tower just a few months ago. And now we don't have the reliable means to make sure that that thing is operating efficiently. And there's a lot of bad things that can go wrong. So we've asked to keep that in there this year. That was, that was brought forward as well from the '25 budget that had been cut. There was a significant increase in the jail budget. And I don't know that this is the place or the time to discuss it, but I don't, I don't think, and I'm not a proponent of keeping a jail budget in the police department. I have not been for a long time. There's a lot of reasons why. But there's also a lot of influences on that that we can't control. And I think in 2025, we budgeted 575,000 for jail expenses. And that's about an average of, I believe, 44,000 a month. In July, June and July, that, that expense was over 100,000 for each month. So if that continues, I mean, that's 100 grand a month, looking at a million dollars, over a million dollar a year just in the jail budget. We didn't ask for that. We asked for 800,000. If the trend continues, that won't be enough. I have been communicating with the District Court Judges, District Court Prosecutor. So I know everybody's looking. so I know everybody's looking at ways that we can bring that back down and, and hopefully not have to significantly increase that amount. But that is included in our, in our budget request. I moved all capital expenses out of the sales tax fund that we had put in the previous capital improvement plans. That includes the $750,000 annual Axon payment. That had always been in the general fund. After we got the sales tax, we paid that in 2025 out of the sales tax fund. But as I've indicated previously, we really need to get some raises, again, for the sworn officers. We're, we're not anywhere close to being competitive with the agencies that are pulling officers away from us. I, I intend to ask for a ten percent raise. My, that's not enough, but it's, I mean, it's a start, and I think it's, you know, a good compromise for where we are right now. But my plan is to use the remainder of the funds that we receive from the sales tax to pay for those raises. It's gonna be somewhere around $1.4 million. So by doing that, by clearing all of the, the capital expenses out of the, the sales tax fund, and just exclusively using that for raises, the, the, the ten percent increase this year that, that I'm asking for should not impact the general fund in, in any way. And, and in that topic, the capital expenses, which our vehicles are our most, our biggest and most recurring, the fleet leasing program will solve that. And so we eliminated all vehicle expenses, capital requests from our twenty-six budget with anticipation of that we would have the ability to move forward with the fleet leasing program. The $1 million that, that the Board has generously given us for the last several years for capital expenses, we intend to use that for the fleet leasing. If there are any overages there, we don't plan to come back to the Board asking for, for more money in that. We have a plan for how we intend to do that, which also includes part of the program and how it maintains itself. As we start rotating vehicles out and selling the vehicles off, it will start paying for itself and putting money back in the program. And so with that, this, these numbers that you have up here in front of you now are probably, these were before the updated information that Andy sent out. And just to, just, just to boil, drill it all down, forty-seven oh one, which is Administration, Personnel and Benefits, see an increase of seventy-five thousand. Again, this was before the $2.5 million was applied from the sales tax. The increase of 1.1 million in operations was due to the 1.25 million that was pulled forward from the requested 2025 budget. Forty-seven oh two, which is Special Operations Personnel Increase, 341,000. Operations Increase, 724,000. That is due to pulling the Axon contract out of the sales taxes and putting it back into the general fund. This thing doesn't know the difference between forward and backwards, or I don't. There we go. Forty-seven oh three, Criminal Investigations Personnel Increase, 928,845. Operations decreased by a thousand, a little over a thousand dollars. Forty-seven oh four, this is Patrol Operations, the bulk of the department. Salary benefits increased a million dollars. Operations decreased by 386,000. That's due to us pulling the capital outlay request for vehicles out that we had put in the Capital Improvement Plan. Forty-seven oh five, Special Operations, Patrol Special Operations Salary Benefits Increase, 411,000, 412,000. Operations Decreased, $3,398. Forty-oh, forty-seven oh six, Airport Doesn't Have An Operations Budget, Salaries Increased By 76,578. Forty-seven oh seven, Animal Control, Animal Services, Salary Increase, 25,895. Operations Decreased By Almost $100,000. I anticipate that probably will go up some if Administration decides to up the spay neuter amount. I believe it's a hundred and fifty thousand, maybe more this year. But we've dialed that back to its original seventy-five thousand. And we also took out a, a Animal Services Equipment that we purchased this year with funds that we received from the courts. Forty-seven oh eight, this has already been talked about. This program has been removed from the Police Department and has, is its own department now. It's the Rivali Communication Center. So that budget of 1.6 million dollars was removed from us. I believe that's the last program. Forty-seven oh nine is the Sales Tax Program. That's where the funds come in from the, the one-eighth cent sales tax. So there's still, still quite a bit of work to be done with that as we get your approval or disapproval for some of the things that I've talked about tonight. Hopefully, it, it makes sense. I mean, to boil it all down, we're essentially not coming and asking for much of anything from the, from the general fund. And we're offering a, a solution, I think, that's gonna be sustainable and, and take at least us out of the picture in regards to requesting vehicles with this fleet leasing program. So, do you have any questions?
Yes. So, do you have a, again, a top line like the Fire Department, like the Parks Department provided in new equipment requests for 2026?
No.
Out of the, meaning there are no requests, or there's, there's not a number?
There was only a couple items that were originally built in. It was the one million and a quarter for the Regional Training Facility, and then 143,000 for the EMS upgrade, which I think, you know, that's what's in the numbers right now.
Okay.
And I think you've, are suggesting that we keep the 143.
Correct.
For the EMS upgrade, and probably sideline the Regional Training.
For this, for this year.
For, for right now.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you. Director George.
Danny, you were, by, by position short?
I'm sorry?
Five positions short.
I'm not sure where that number came from. I'm gonna have to talk to Eric about, he said, you talking about the positions that he was talking about? Those were non-sworn. Am I, am I correct? Six non-sworn?
No, those were sworn positions, but those are, those are, that doesn't employ for recent ones. Have an excellent benefit. Those are positions.
Well, the reason I'm asking.
We, we currently have, we currently have seven vacancies, seven vacancies in sworn, in, in.
But the officers that have left was a due over pay, over salary?
Most of them, yes. I mean, we're, we're losing a number of officers to State Police. They.
Of course, there were about sixty-five thousand now.
Sixty-seven, I believe.
We need to work on, address that. Okay, thank you, Andy.
Yep, Director Kemp?
Thank you. On, on the spirit of that, cuz I had several things I wrote down, just to kinda confirm back with you, you know, on the pay raises, cuz it does sound like it needs to be done, and you talked about ten percent, and you talked about, you know, that won't make up kind of where we are with the competitors around us. What, how far are we behind? Do we have a number target? Like percentage-wise?
Twenty.
If ten percent doesn't get us there, we're.
Twenty.
So we're twenty percent behind?
At least. I mean, we started, our starting pay is, is fifty thousand. That's the base salary for a police officer that has no training, no experience, no college. And I believe State Police is, they're, they are starting at sixty-seven. I believe Fayetteville is around sixty-five, sixty-four thousand. And to be honest, I mean, we haven't lost anybody to Fayetteville in, in a long time, but we are losing them to State Police. We've lost a couple to smaller agencies who have matched their pay. Basically lured them, lured, lured them to a smaller, quieter jurisdiction for the same amount of money, so.
With the, you mentioned earlier in the, in the study session on the fleet lease program, that that could potentially also be considered as a, a perk and a positive for our employment, employments. Is that correct?
I think it'll be a huge retention tool.
Is that, just to confirm again, this model that you talked about is going to keep us from having to come back because of the resale? Is this correct? And that when we resell, we get some, we have built-in equity?
Correct.
And then that will also help you continue the program forward? Is that kinda?
Yes. And, and there were some questions about some increases in, in the amount over time, but what those increases didn't take into account were the, the money that we would get back for selling these vehicles. And, I mean, if we're smart about the way we do it, and we buy vehicles that have a high resale value, and, and another part of that is by giving more officers their individual vehicle to take care of, it's a sign that they almost, those vehicles are gonna be driven less, they're gonna get less wear and tear on them, the officers are gonna take better care of them, so that's just gonna increase that resale value.
And you've got that built in there. The, the 2.4 million coming back in 2025 that we were forecasting, Andy, is that accounted for in what you think of coming back at the end of the year? Or is that going to be two and a half, or 2.4 million that we haven't accounted for and will continue to even move it more positive?
I think, I think will account for that when we go through the projected spend and, and see, you know, how the projected, the actual projected spend for 2025 ends up compared to the, what we had beginning of twenty-five?
Cuz I think that comes back to Director Martin's beginning questions of what kind of swing can we expect? But if you've got 2.4 million as a positive coming back, that's a, that is a substantial swing in, in the, in the debt that we're talking about there. The last one is on the, the 1.25 million on the Crane Kia property. And if, if we pull back on that, as you're suggesting or talking about, that we should probably have more dialogue about, I do think that should be something we talk about. Is there any advantage to, and I know you and I talked prior to this meeting, and I said, are you looking in that plan to tear property down and just utilizing the land and rebuilding structures? And we talked about, no, utilizing what's there. Is there any sort of phased-in benefit that you can have a, just a relabeling of existing structures and, you know, label it Fort Smith Police? And then, you know, you have some cars that, a benefit to putting something there, or, or is that, could you weigh in on that?
Sure. And it's, as far as just moving into the, the building, no, there's too much work that needs to be done. Now, phasing it in is absolutely a possibility. This is something that I keep sending my folks back to the drawing board on. We've got several different options to present. We have hired an architect to, to design the facility. And bulk of, in fact, all of that, I believe, has been paid for out of the sales taxes for the, for the design study. But we're looking at a number of different options and also phasing in a number of different options. So perhaps we could build out the training facility first, move into that, get a presence on the, on the property. There are a lot of benefits to that. About $68,000 a year, $70,000 a year we're spending to the county to rent space where we currently are. And, and I mean, my, my hope is to have a, a regional classy training facility that will attract agencies from, from other areas, other states to come do training here. And there's absolutely an economic benefit to that. You know, those, those folks need, say again?
Indoor gun range?
I don't know that we'll do an indoor gun range.
Andy, come on now.
There's a lot of, a lot of hurdles to jump with that, but we're, you need to go look at the firing range out at the landfill. We're definitely doing some, some improvements out there, and I have to get, take my hat off to Streets Department and, and Solid Waste for the work that they've put into that.
Well, I'm all for, if we have to pause, in the sense I respect you guys and what you have for input to bring in that discussion. I will say, for whatever it's worth, the positive is I see more police on the south side of town than I feel like I've seen in previous years. And I don't know if that's how you're shaping the patrols and what they do, but we've seen a lot more police on the south side of town. So, and your response time has been, has been good as well. So, well, at least when I've.
Danny runs a good show.
Director Martin? Chief, I know that you send out the Part One crime statistic numbers every month, and there's, there's a number of, of officers, and then there's kind of an FBI statistic associated with that, and they're different. What is that FBI number? I, I mean, is, is that their recommend? I think I've asked this a few years ago, maybe when I first started. Is that the recommended number based on our population?
Population.
Okay.
It's the officer-to-citizen ratio, and it, I mean, that's a, that's a ballpark number, and you can find different recommendations. That's just the, the FBI recommended amount. I think it was about 198.
198, right, right.
And there are others that, that go off population, they go off calls, you know, a number of calls that officers are answering. But, I mean, we, we, we need more officers. We could obviously serve the, the city better with more officers, but if we can keep what we've got,
Right.
I think that would be the, the best start.
Did we, didn't, weren't you applying for a grant that was gonna get you five officers? We, we, we approved that just in the last few months?
I don't remember. Say again? We applied for a cop's grant, but I don't think we got it, did we?
Okay, okay.
None of the grants have come back yet.
Okay, okay. The, the, the reason that, that I ask, and I know that there's various ways that people can pull statistics and what statistics say in crime rates and things like that. But one of the things that I hear is we have a high crime rate in the city of Fort Smith. I don't know if that's true or not. But, but is there, I guess what I'm getting at is, do we have enough officers? That, do we have enough officers? Do we need more officers to be able to either reduce that crime rate? Or, you know, is it one kind of crime that is, you know, we, we talked in the budget session, maybe in twenty-three, about the youth officer that, that you've got in place. But are there, are there other things that maybe we need to look at? And I'm not big, I'm not a big proponent of, of adding stuff, but I am a proponent of looking at where we're at from a police and fire perspective and, and assessing our needs and, and say, do we, do we have a, a need or an urgency in which we need to add additional officers?
I don't believe there's an urgency. Obviously, if we add officers, that's gonna improve, again, our, our delivery of services, but more officers means more we have to retain. I would like to just to get to the point where we're not having to continue to hire and recruit folks.
Right.
We have significantly slowed that down. I mean, the, the, the attrition rate at the Police Department is, is way lower than it was just a few years ago. As to the, crime being high in Fort Smith, I mean, that, you can, you can look at the numbers, and, and numbers don't mean anything. If somebody's been victimized by something, they're gonna perceive that the crime is, is high. Fort Smith, historically, for as long as I've been here, has been at or above the national average in regards to certain crimes, particularly aggravated assaults. But if you, if you look at our local trends, we are, for the last three to four years, we have been steadily reducing that number of the violent crime. The Part One crimes, we're near over forty percent below what we were in 2021.
Right.
And so as we look, as those numbers, local numbers and local comparisons come down, what I wanna start doing now is look at our comparisons on national average, and we wanna get below that. We, we don't wanna be above a national average in anything.
Right.
And except the good things. And so, I mean, we, we pay a close attention to that. We review those numbers every, every two weeks in the comp stat process. And when we see spikes, we address it. We, we had a, a recent increase in, in drive-by shootings, and we've taken decisive steps to address that problem, and we have been successful. Will we have problems again? Yes. And when, when they come up, we will, we'll be on top of it.
Okay. I, I, I guess my, my, my thought is, you know, if we're gonna look at adding something, this, this would be an area that, I want, I want people to feel safe when they're here. I, I feel safe. But I wanna, I wanna make sure that we're giving you every resource that you can, or every resource that you need to be successful. And I think you are, but, but how can we be even, even be more successful? So I look at those numbers, those FBI numbers, and, and I look at it and say, okay, well, how do I need to square this thing away? And, and just know, I think we, I think the Board is, has, has been pretty open to, to ideas and suggestions, so I just wanna, wanna make sure that we're doing our due diligence.
Hey Danny, where's these ICE agents at? So we had ten here now?
Has, I, I, I'm sorry.
Ten ICE agents?
Ten ICE agents.
Yeah. The enforced, uh, immigration.
I don't know how many ICE agents that there are. There, I mean, the last time that I. I don't know how many ICE agents that there are. There, I mean, the last time that I sat down with the ICE supervisor, I believe there were.
Is your question about the 10 people from the National Guard that were deployed to assist ICE?
Yeah.
I don't know anything more about that than what you've seen.
They hadn't contacted you?
No, sir.
Well, that's pretty crappy. Don't you think? Let you know what's going on in your own city?
Well, I mean, it, it was a bit surprising when the news alert popped up on, on my phone.
Any other budget questions for the chief? Thank you, chief. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
So as we've reached the end of the agenda for tonight, the question for my colleagues is, did you find this format and this process and structure helpful? Or are there changes that should be looked at moving forward in, in some of the other departments?
I, I wouldn't mind looking at utilities in this, but going line by line through everything feels like we're bringing the budget meeting to before administration does some work. And I would love to, like I said, look at utilities at a deep look, but then on these other focuses. I'd love the administration to tell us two or three pathways. Hey, on these other departments, we can make some adjustments here and they can bring it back. And then we can have a dialogue about that instead of diving into every detail of it. But that's just my opinion.
Thank you.
I like to go line by line. I mean, I firmly disagree. I want to see everything. I want to go through it. I want to make cuts where we need to make them and know exactly how the budget's coming together.
I'll, I'll say this, these, these budgets tonight were not really the, the ones that I'm eyeballing. So it kind of, I'm not going to cut police. I'm not going to cut fire. So this, I, I, I didn't really have a lot of, you know, a lot of thought, you know, concerns that I had out of this. And I think our, our chiefs and, and parks, good job. I think there's other areas though, in the general fund that, that we, we probably can look at and, and offer.
I just come back to, we, we will be doing the line by line look in the budget meeting, correct? This all day budget hearing that I sat through last year?
Yes.
The 10 hour?
November the 14th.
Yeah. I mean, I'd love to see, look at utilities. I'd love to see where administration thinks we can talk about some good dialogue of these cuts. But I mean, ultimately we pay, we pay a CFO, we pay an administrator. I want to see you guys tell me where we can make these adjustments, at least give us some options and a, a view here.
Well, and the, and the interesting thing to, to keep in mind is that what we saw tonight, and I think why we started with these three, is that these three departments that we talked about tonight, over the last three years, on average, represent over 60% of the general fund spending. So it was natural to begin with them. And so the question, you know, and I hate to be like the Mr. Logistics or Party Planner guy. But Jeff had proposed a notion of, you know, we didn't obviously settle on it, but having meetings, 5:30 meetings, I think the 15th, which is next Monday and the 17th, which is next Wednesday. So I wanted to check and see if that was something you still wanted to do, or we just wanted to try to have one next week and, and work down next to, you know, utilities?
I think we need one for utilities alone, budget the whole time for utilities.
That, I mean, I would, I would agree with that.
I'd be in concurrence for a Monday. I don't want to do a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. I would do a Monday utilities look. I like, I think I agree. And then obviously our Tuesday meeting. And then I think we should see where it carries us by the end of that.
Yeah. Does that mean anybody have a preference next week, Monday versus Wednesday? Because I do agree, three, three in a row is probably not the best answer.
I'd rather do Monday.
I cannot do Wednesday.
I'd rather do Monday.
I, I cannot do either because of coaching obligations, which is fine, but just could think of that from a quorum perspective, you know, as we move, we have to have four.
I would just say, I, I could do Monday. My daughter's having teeth pulled on Wednesday, so I'll probably need to be with her.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I just realized.
Are you out every Monday, Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay.
For, you know.
Could we amend our study sessions and the next study session to focus on utilities?
So, so next week is a, next Tuesday is a regular voting meeting, right?
Yes.
But I'm just saying, the next Tuesday study session, could it just be clear to look at utilities? That would also give Lance time to make sure he has the adequate information.
On the, on September 23rd, we have a consultant coming in for Solid Waste to deliver the information on that one. And we have scheduled the, I know the cemetery's discussion is coming back on the 23rd.
I personally would love to pause on the cemetery until we have more budget conversations. So I don't know how long the, the presentation would take, but I think it would still fit to make that a study session on utilities.
I'm agreeing with the pause on the cemetery.
Well, and we certainly can do that, but I'm saying, we have some, we have someone scheduled to travel in to, to be with us and then present.
Do we have an idea of how much time he needs?
Remind us what that, that is regarding.
The, we had a, a cost, cost of service study, a comprehensive plan review of the solid waste department and Dwayne and our consultant have been working to finish that up. And yeah, Sloan Vasquez, Mark, SVM Consulting. They've been working on this for two years just about. And they need to get in front of the board with their.
We need to be aware of this.
Well, could we not just do both items? That one, I mean, we're not looking at any other department budget wise except utilities.
Yeah, that's, that's not a, that's not a terrible idea. I wouldn't think, I mean, do you imagine he'll probably have? I mean, we have a presentation and slides and all that, so that'll be.
45 to 60 minutes altogether?
Well, you're trying to include us talking?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, if, if, I would think we could accomplish both on the night of the 23rd. Provided we, you know, police ourselves in the sense of if we limit ourselves to around an hour or so on the solid waste item.
And we did that tonight. We were 7:24. We said 7:30. I also think the nights we gain back by not adding should be factored into the equation by putting this in our regular schedule. We're not adding to our schedule.
Well, so presumably the gentleman's coming to present for rate increase, right? Is that what they're looking at? I mean, that'll be more than an hour long discussion.
Well, but not specifically that either, but just a review of the, of the department. I mean, it was, it was mentioned not so long ago, you know, a comprehensive sort of plan for water utility or something like, but this, this is that sort of thing that's already been in and works for solid waste, which is, will be important for us.
I mean, it does have the potential to have a long, so can I cycle back to what were focuses available of the four of us? I guess because we're the ones that are left. What were the availabilities you all could, could do Monday, the 15th? Or was it vice versa? Because I know Director Good, you mentioned Wednesday wasn't good for you next week.
I can't do because of my daughter's teeth, but other than that, I'm.
And so the 15th would potentially work.
I, I, I just realized, you know, JV football, I'm, I'm not, my son, I would rather just pick a Wednesday that I will find a guest speaker.
Yeah.
And so if there's a Wednesday here that fits it.
And also if I might add, just add to that, on this particular Monday, the 15th, we are scheduled to be with utilities all day long through finance and admin to go through their budgets. And so in order to do that and then turn around anything to produce for you, that would be, as a result of that, would be nearly impossible to do by 5:30.
Well.
Is it, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm, I just, for the sake of back on not adding to things, people are in the rhythm of this Tuesday. Is there a rush that we have this in September? I mean, could we do the next study session that's available to be for utilities?
It'd be October the 21st.
What about?
Do we not have one on the 14th?
October the 7th is a regular meeting.
14th of October is not a study session?
No. Well.
National Night Out or something.
Wait a second. How is?
The 14th. The 14th would be the study session.
That's what I was saying. Could we not do it on the 14th of October?
Thursday's not good for everybody. I mean, it's Thursday, we're all here.
I agree.
Thursdays are, for the next month or so, as it relates to, here through to October for, for baseball. The coaching that I do, it's Mondays and Wednesdays. Thursdays are better.
Thursdays is better for me.
So would.
18th?
Thursday, the 18th for utilities work, work for more of us than not? Well, Jeff, would you mind sending? Well. I guess, you know, it is important to know what Director Good and Director Settle and their schedules and, and all that. Or even Thurs, you know. Yeah. I mean, there's, it's important and we recognize that it's important to, I mean, we do all acknowledge it's important to sit and talk about utilities itself and have it, have a devoted session to that. And so it remains a work in progress scheduling it.
Why doesn't Vice Mayor Jared Rego call the city clerk tomorrow to make a motion for Thursday, September 18th and let all these directors concur or not concur?
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's certainly a possibility. Okay. And last but not least, all the city folks that are here and, and, you know, I, and all the staff members and their families. We want to say thank you because we know there's extra meetings and things happening out of the usual rhythm. And, you know, you've been very patient with us and helpful to us as we try to budget and do it a little bit differently this year. So thank you for hanging with us and, and coming to these extra gatherings. We're grateful for your help and your wisdom as we go through this.
Indeed.
Anything else before we adjourn tonight? Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. Thank.